This is the IBJ Podcast for the week of August 1st, 2022, brought to you by TAFT. I'm your host, Mason King. Welcome back to the podcast, everybody. You might be familiar with the reality TV show Undercover Boss, where CEOs and other executives disguise themselves as entry-level workers so they can get an unvarnished view of the inner workings of their companies. Now, I don't want to lead you too far astray here, but today's podcast is kind of related. Our subject is Tony Diswoner, who might ring a bell for Washington Township residents. He served on the Township School Board for three consecutive terms from 2008 to 2020. After stepping down, he was looking for a way to spend some of his new free time when he remembered that the district, like most school corporations, needed bus drivers. He largely was drawn to the idea due to the service aspect, but the money was good, about $26 per hour, and he was interested in the challenge of driving something that's about 40 feet long. So Diswoner received the required training and a commercial driver's license and became one of about 100 district bus drivers in fall 2021. He worked daily, running two or three routes in the southeast portion of the district that included elementary children, middle schoolers, and high school students. And he didn't disguise himself or keep any secrets from his fellow bus drivers. But I mention Undercover Boss because he did get an opportunity to see the district from a street-level perspective and to get a sense of the impact of at least one of the school board's student-focused initiatives. Tony Diswoner is our guest this week to share his experiences waking up at 5:00 AM every school day and getting behind the wheel. Parents, I'm sure, will be interested in knowing which student age group was the toughest to handle and how Diswoner navigated that challenge. Even after 12 years on the school board, driving a bus was a big learning experience. And if I may paraphrase one of his discoveries, you always need to know where the back of the bus is. Here's our conversation. It's my pleasure to welcome to the podcast Tony Diswoner. Thank you for making time today.
Thank you, Mason. Appreciate you giving me a call.
Hey, I don't think I've ever started the podcast this way, but I'm going to ask you a personal question. How old are you?
I just turned 58.
Is that right? Okay.
Yeah.
You are, you are a fit 58, if I may say.
Well, you're kind to say so.
Sure. Now, voters in Washington Township may be familiar with you, but can you give our listeners a better sense of your tenure on the Washington Township School Board, or excuse me, School District's Board of Education?
I was elected and honored to serve three terms on the Washington Township School Board here in Marion County.
And what were the years for that?
Oh, Mason, you're asking for dates. I think I finished up right after the first nine months of the pandemic. So I ended in December, the end of December 2020. So go back 12 years, I guess that means I was elected in 2008.
Did you, in the last one, did you choose not to run, or were you?
Correct. For, for me, I felt three terms was a good run of service, and it was time to turn that over to, to other folks in the township to carry on a great tradition of good public schools here in Washington Township.
So being on the school board, am I right, is that a part-time position? I mean, it's not something that comes with a, with a livable salary?
That is correct. It comes with a state mandated $2,000 salary a year, plus per diem expenses for meetings. So, school board members make about $4,000 a year.
Then what can you tell us about your professional life? I, I do recall that you had some experience as a teacher.
I had a grand total of two years as a teacher. When I got out of college and got laid off both years due to budget disagreements in the state legislature. And after the second layoff, I decided to look for another way to serve and ended up working for the state of Indiana, both in the Department of Commerce promoting energy efficiency programs and then representing utility consumer interests at the Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor.
Now, as a school board member, I'm sure that you have an appreciation for the role that school bus drivers play in the education ecosystem.
Absolutely. Our focus is primarily on our educators oftentimes, but there are many folks that make school possible. And the school bus drivers get kids to and from school safely each day.
So now, take us back to, I'm guessing it was 2021. You are made aware, probably made aware is not a good way to put it, because I think you probably have been aware for many, many years about the need for good bus drivers. How did you come to the decision to be a bus driver?
Well, it was a combination of things. I had just finished my 12th year on the school board and decided not to run again. So I knew I was going to have some extra time. I knew that we had a great need for bus drivers, that we were having a shortage, as every school district in the country, in fact, is having right now. And that that was making it challenging. So some kids, when bus drivers were short on a day, or sick, or unable to drive, we were having kids arriving at school late. So I knew there was a need, coupled with my availability, and then a five-year-old's dream. My, my maternal grandfather was a truck driver. And as a young child growing up, I always wanted to be a truck driver like my grandfather. You combine all three of those things, and I thought, well, this, this could be something I, I could do with my extra time. I was not looking for full-time work, and this struck me as something that I could help with.
I'm sure the question people are wondering right now is, how much were they paying?
Well, that is a very enticing figure for those people who might be curious. Beginning drivers in Washington Township earn about $26 an hour.
Oh, wow. That's, wow, I did not expect that much.
Yeah. And that's a fairly competitive pay structure with most of the other systems around, I believe.
How many hours per day would you then work?
That can be very dependent upon the driver and their willingness. Originally, I was hoping this was going to be a five-hour-a-day job, but due to shortages and unavailability of a driver who had a medical condition that required extended time off, I ended up working about seven hours a day. So.
Wow.
It was a little more than I had wanted originally. But again, part of the reason I, I did this was because I knew kids needed to get to school. So in this case, I was able and willing to help out.
So what kind of training do you get? Have you ever driven anything that big before?
The largest I've driven are grain trucks on the farm and larger moving truck that one does not need a commercial license for. But the, the district and most school districts do have training programs. In fact, you'll receive a small stipend to be trained, because this does require a commercial driver's license and a passenger endorsement on that.
Okay. So what is it like the first time you get into the seat? You start driving. What's the, the experience?
You know, it's, it's not that different from the larger moving trucks, except that it does have a longer wheelbase. And the longer wheelbase does take more space to make those turns, particularly the right-hand turn. So always appreciate those drivers at four-way stops that understand longer vehicles trying to turn right need more space at stop signs.
Was it, was it pretty easy to get comfortable driving something that big?
You know, I, I think it's very dependent upon the person. For me, I, I was fairly comfortable. It definitely is an adjustment. It is not driving a, a car or even a large pickup. It's a much larger vehicle, but it is definitely not insurmountable. Just requires a change of mindset and some practice.
And when you first were involved, I guess, in the transportation department and getting the training and meeting your fellow drivers, were people aware that you were a former school board member? Do they think that this was like some episode of, what is that, was that a show? We're the boss.
That's right. That's right. They were. In fact, when I was first thinking of this idea, the first call I made was to the superintendent, because being a board member is a unique position and a unique hat to wear. And even being a former board member, I wanted to make sure that if I chose to do this in Washington Township, it was something the superintendent and the rest of the administration were comfortable with and wholeheartedly encouraged, the shortages that, that severe, that they know if they've got quality people who are interested in doing this, who care about kids, they, they need them. And so they were willing to put up with whatever small headaches there might be. And thankfully, I, I hope there haven't been too many. I don't believe there have been.
How many bus drivers are there typically during the school year?
That's a very good question. I believe we have a fleet of just over 100 buses. And so some of those are spares. Guessing we're right around 100 or just under 100 drivers.
And most of those buses would be used in the course of a regular day?
Right.
So tell me about your routes. Who were you picking up?
Well, I was picking up originally high school and elementary students. The newer drivers, as, as many jobs go, seniority has its benefits. And more senior drivers who've been there longer and have good records get to choose first which routes they would like. So when you're a newer driver, you typically get what's left on the table. And often that is one of the longer routes. And that's indeed what I had received. And, but it was, it was very doable. It was just a little challenging with some road construction that was starting at the same time.
Can you tell us, like, what area of the district basically you were operating in?
I was in our far southeast portion of our district. So I drove down to 42nd and Emerson, and then back over to North Central High School up at 86 and Keystone and Westfield.
You know, it's so hard for me to imagine this, because I only used the bus when I was in junior high. And so everybody on the bus was the same age. In your experience, were they, one of your routes was just high school kids?
Correct. We, we run a three-tiered system in Washington Township, which means we run a, last year, a high school route first in the morning. Then we would run a, an elementary route. And then the junior high, middle school would go the third route.
Oh, wow. So you would have three routes in the morning?
Most drivers did. Originally, I only had two routes because of the length of time that this route took to drive and pick up students. But eventually, there was a need for another driver in the middle school. And so I ended up, for the last three or four months of the year, driving a middle school route as well.
So what time did you have to wake up in the morning?
5:00 AM.
Okay. Well, that's about when I wake up.
It's not my preferred time, Mason. But thankfully, my wife is a, a morning person. And so she, she helped me keep to that schedule. And the hardest thing to do is to get to bed between 9:00 and 10:00 in the evening. That's also not my preferred time to close down the day. But during the school year, that was the best thing to do to maintain good, good sleep hygiene.
Yeah. You mentioned your wife. What did she think about this plan, this idea?
She was very supportive.
Were you ever reprimanded for poor performance?
As a, as a bus driver?
As a bus, yeah, just not as a husband.
Not, not poor performance, but I, I did have two issues this year backing the bus, where I unfortunately ran into a stationary object. And so I did engage in some additional safety training and practice driving with our bus driver trainer to learn how to better recognize the, the situation and where the rear end of that bus is located. That is, that's the biggest challenge for me.
How long is that bus?
Forty-two feet. Forty-two or 38. See? I need to go back and review my safety training before the end of July.
That's right. No wonder you had problems. Okay. Let's take a quick break to hear from our sponsor. This is the IBJ Podcast. TAFT, today's modern law firm. With more than 625 attorneys across 11 offices, we provide solutions to the business issues facing middle market and emerging companies alike. We do this through a highly collaborative and inclusive team approach. TAFT, the modern law firm. To learn more, visit taftlaw.com. All right. We're back with this week's edition of the IBJ Podcast with Washington Township School Board Member-turned-bus driver, Tony Diswoner. So, so what did you enjoy about this, if you did indeed enjoy it? Sounds like you are going to do it again.
I, I checked in with the district at the end of the year. And given my two minor backup experiences, I did ask if, if I would be invited back. And I asked if they had already filled up their training class and were looking good for the next year. And they indicated they still had a shortage of drivers and would greatly appreciate me coming back next year. So that is my intention to drive again next year.
And what did you like about it? Why are you going back?
Right. I, I get a lot out of being of service. And, and there is a need, and kids need to get to school. And we certainly want our future citizens to be educated. I do, certainly. So knowing that it's a, a very important task to get kids to school, where they can grow and reach their potentials, that's one of the biggest satisfactions I get. Yeah. You mentioned the challenge of driving a vehicle that big. There's a personal satisfaction in, in learning and getting more comfortable with being able to do that well, particularly when one is not backing into a fence at the, at the school maintenance yard. So there is that satisfaction. There was, you know, one of the biggest challenges, I will say, of bus driving is to be both a safe bus driver and also to maintain discipline on the bus. So I really had wonderful high school kids and wonderful middle school kids, but I had a busload of 54 elementary kids that really, you know, they are learning school, they are learning self-control themselves. And when there are 54 of them on a bus, there's all sorts of opportunities for them to get into each other's business and maybe talk too loudly and make fun of someone. So there was opportunities for me to learn how to be both a bus driver and a, I could say, a disciplinarian of some type to make sure that the students followed the rules on the bus and were treating each other well and maintaining a volume level that allowed me to drive the bus safely.
Yeah. So you had, like you said, you had a couple of years of classroom experience, but this, this is a different animal.
It is a different animal. The wonderful thing about classrooms, you know, not that teachers don't have exceedingly challenging jobs, but proximity can, can help so much when it comes to behavior issues. Just walking near a student who's doing something they shouldn't can be a great way to get them to remember what the boundaries are at school. When you're driving a bus, unless you pull that bus over in a safe place, you really don't get proximity. So it, it is a, a new kind of animal of learning how to discipline from a distance, how to get students to respect your request, respect the request of the, the school authorities and the rules on the bus. And so that, that was a challenge in and of its own. Probably one of the biggest challenges for me, I'd say.
Did you have to threaten to pull the bus over?
I, I had to pull the bus over a couple of times. Absolutely. That's just part of the nature of learning that process and learning, different people have different styles. Some people have a personality that can evoke that shock and awe from a bus seat. I do not have that type of personality. And so I had to go about doing things a little differently. And learning how to do that was probably the biggest challenge I had over the course of the school year, and also one of the most satisfying. By, by the end of the year, I, I felt like I had made some great progress in that. That, in truth, was one of the reasons I was kind of looking forward to possibly driving a second year to see, one, if I begin the new school year now knowing what I know, how much different does the year go as opposed to the way I started as a, as a green, fresh bus driver who had not had that experience?
So the, the one time you really have proximity, or the two times, is when they're getting on and getting off. Would you use that moment, you know, to cast glances at?
Absolutely, absolutely. Or to have conversations. Because just as it is good discipline in the classroom or with your children at home, developing the relationship. And it's challenging, obviously, for a bus driver, because you see the kids for, you know, anywhere between 15 and 50 minutes in the morning and 15 and 50 minutes in the evening. But over time, you know, you're doing this five days a week, and students are generally riding five days a week. So you do want to develop a relationship. You want to let them know to honor and respect them as a person so that they would honor and respect you as a person as well.
So what did you learn about being a bus driver that you think would be important for district officials to know? I mean, are you, have you ever debriefed, for example, with the superintendent about your experience? So be, answer the first question first.
Indeed, indeed. I have been asked that question. And I have notes put together, but I have not shared those yet. Unfortunately, you're causing me to embarrassingly point out my lack of getting my to-do list done. But a number of other things have conspired to get in the way, and that is something I will be doing. Absolutely.
Yeah. Share a couple of things with us.
Sure. One, I think training is critically important. Having the opportunity to have an adequate amount of time to get knowledgeable and comfortable with the size of the bus is one thing. Secondly, though, time with students or an experienced driver on the bus with students, I think, is critical. To watch how the driver interacts with the students, how they deal with behavior challenges when they arise, how they develop relationships with the students, how they set expectations at the beginning of the year. All of those things are, I think, critical part of training for a new bus driver.
What have you learned about school kids, you think, that would be important for district officials to know?
Well, I think they already know. Most educators or educational folks who have been involved in schools know these things. But it was interesting. It had been decades since I had been in the classroom. I'd raised my own children. But even some of the kids that gave me some behavior challenges throughout the year, it was impressive to watch and their growth and their problematic behavior earlier by the end of the year had really improved. And so watching that growth and knowing that the kids want to do well. And I think it's to, it's for us adults to help them find the way to do that so that they can have the best chances of success in life that they can. And obviously, problematic behavior is usually not going to help you in too many places in the world. So watching that growth and that desire to, to change, that was probably most satisfying.
You mentioned that, I mean, the younger students, obviously, I mean, part of the school experience is learning how to, I don't want to say behave, though that's obviously one of the parts of it, but you know, how to be in school. And, and this certainly is a group of kids that, you know, for two years, I mean, in some cases, were never sure from day to day whether or not they were going to be going to school. That this, this particular group had more challenges in terms of really understanding what it is, you know, to be a responsible student. Do you think that, that, I mean, what you witnessed was just them getting more comfortable with school? Or was it them getting more comfortable with you, or was it both?
I think COVID, and talking to all the educators and for the nine months that I was on the board during that beginning of COVID, it's definitely exacerbated the normal challenges of childhood and learning those things, no doubt. One of the things I'm very proud of that we as a school board and, and our community here in Washington Township did approve a referendum for additional dollars to hire more social support staff in the school buildings to help students. So that teachers who are trying to teach the academic content, when they run into a student with particularly challenging behavior challenges, can have additional dedicated support who take that time. And it was very remarkable to watch several students, a couple of students in particular, who had that extra resource at school over several months, and to watch the improvement in their behavior on the bus as a result of that additional time and, and relationship building that that staff member was able to do with those students. I'd like to have our state legislature be able to see that up close so that those kinds of supports could be funded, you know, in our general school funding and that it wouldn't be something additional we had to go to voters each individual district to access. But it was very powerful to see those extra resources at work in these kids just from the perspective of a bus driver. I would imagine their teachers saw even more.
What did they call you? Were you Mr. Diswoner?
Yeah. I, I went with Mr. Tony. Contemplating whether I'll be Mr. D next year. My wife thinks I should stick with Mr. Tony. For some reason, it sounds a little corny to me. So I might go with Mr. D. Yeah. As if Mr. D sounds less corny.
I know. You're, you're getting really close to McDonald's there. I mean, Mr. Tony probably is a better, better choice.
Maybe I'll just go with, hey, old man. Not sure.
That's a super bad idea. Did they ever make up?
Yes. There's always some name-calling that goes on with elementary students, Mason. You know this, right?
I have no idea.
So I, I let those students have a little bit of rope and then talked to them about respect a little later. It, it got better. So.
Yeah. They were saying, hey, do you know who I am? I used to be on the school board.
No, I never said that to the students. They would be like, what?
Zero impact.
And I, and I care why?
Exactly. Yeah.
No, the, the other thing I was incredibly impressed with, Mason, so making parent calls when you have some issues on the bus is one thing a, a bus driver will do. And it was always very impressive to get the support from parents at home. And in those cases where that call alone didn't address an issue, I found school staff that I worked with to be very supportive. So they would then pick up the issue that I reported, talk to kids, talk to parents if needed. And it's important for people considering to be a bus driver that while that discipline piece can be challenging, you're not alone out there to, to an extent, you know? While you're driving, yes, you are alone, but you got a radio and, for the worst, which thankfully never happened. But yeah, you have supportive parents that you can call to help with the kids, and you've got supportive administrators that can address issues that you have not been able to fix. Especially as a new bus driver, I think that, that's, knowing about that support system is very helpful. Because those folks then also share all sorts of tips and ideas with you. And then you find what works with your personality and what works with the situation and the kids that you're driving.
All right, Mr. Tony. Thank you. Thank you for your service. As a Washington Township taxpayer, I thank you for your service.
You are very welcome, Mr. King.
And I look forward to hearing more stories about this in the future, and, and best of luck.
I will be happy to share that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
My thanks again to Tony Diswoner. And folks, before you get on with the rest of your week, there are a few stories in the latest issue of IBJ I want to draw to your attention. First up, John Russell explores the potential fates of the clinics that perform abortions in Indiana in light of the anti-abortion legislation under consideration. in Indiana in light of the anti-abortion legislation under consideration by the General Assembly. Also in this week's issue, Daniel Bradley details the upcoming demolition of Fisher's City Hall and the efforts underway to mitigate disruption in city services. And Taylor Wooton examines the continuing confusion over how best to offer internship programs in the post-pandemic office landscape. Again, you can find these stories in the latest print edition of IBJ or online at IBJ.com. And I will say, it is easier to access all of the latest local news about business and politics and all of IBJ's data on central Indiana's business, community, and economy if you're a subscriber. And here's a new development. We have wrapped all of IBJ's content together with all of the stories, columns, and podcasts from our sister publication, Inside Indiana Business. And that works out to about $3 per week for actionable information about every notable business development across the state. You will not find Indiana story told with this kind of breadth and depth anywhere else. Just go to IBJ.com and click on the subscribe button.